Alright, we're good to go. Uh, welcome. Instructions on exiting the building in the event of emergency, out the door to the right, to the right, down the stairs, or leave out the door to the left, down the hallway, stairs in the corner. Additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items. Hearing none. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Brian has his hand up. Go ahead, Ryan.
Brian Doyle speaking. So last uh month, you talked about lot coverage. I think that's a really important conversation that continues for a few main reasons. It touches on three really big topics in land use, and that is fiscal responsibility, equity, and the environment. Uh, I want to clear the air by saying that we have always regulated private property, both in society and in our country. Uh, both what gets built on it, um, and even to a lesser degree, what can be done on the properties, even at municipal level in South Burlington. So there's no kind of like default to not regulate private land. Rather, the governing principle is about the importance of when the reasons for any particular regulation um and its justifications. So I, I appreciate the way Duncan, you were expressing your value of wanting to err on the side of red, less regulating. This is just one of those cases where I think there's just so much reason to still move forward with those uh with some kind of change there. Um, our city has committed to not building upon half of the land in it. That's a big commitment. One that comes with added pressure to ensure that what does get built has value to our municipality and to society. John actually had a really good comment that touched upon this uh last month, when he talked about the public good and benefits of getting more housing units on residential land as opposed to increasing lot coverage with structures of low value to society, uh like extra garages, sports courts, permanent swimming structures. The latter two uh which we can build collectively for society to share anyway through recreation. Um, it's especially important because those fixtures don't actually add much value to the grant list. Um, at least nothing near to what they actually cost to build or replace. So here's a comparison between two, two acre sections of land in the city. One is a sixty, seventy year old neighborhood, and one is a roughly twenty year old um development, I would say. Um, so the old neighborhood, they all have leaky cinder block foundations, no insulation and lead paint. The new home is built to a luxury standard with luxury materials and modern materials. Each two acre section has four garage bays. Uh, the old section is near a noisy highway. The new section is near a city-owned open space. The old section has no sidewalks, no street trees, doesn't even have stop signs. The new section has all of those things. The old section has commercial traffic and locations within the neighborhood that generate commercial traffic. The new section is only residential near open lands. One of these two acre sections holds seven single-family homes. The other two acre section holds only one. Um, both are low-density neighborhoods, less than, uh, four or less units per acre. Both have just under a half acre of impervious surface. But the older neighborhood is worth thirty percent more in terms of the grant list, despite all of its defects. So one is moderately efficient with land use and one is pretty terrible with land use. And the one that's terrible with land use actually costs more to maintain. So if we allow lot coverage as a singular percentage, we promote poor land use. If we provide a scale or step function, we might be able to promote better land use depending on uh how that gets set up. Or if we were allowed to tax by means other than simply the open market value of properties, we could address poor land use from that perspective. But currently, our tax structure provides a discount that the more you have, the less each unit gets assessed and taxed at. So that's the opposite of a progressive tax structure. It's actually regressive. South Burlington is a community of amenities. It is not a rural or an ex-urban community. Personal hard courts, I think, really don't belong here. That, that's a hill I will die on. Um, but we aren't saying that people can't cool off or swim at home. But a forty-five hundred square foot pool apparatus is still a wildly poor use of space and also doesn't provide any taxable value. That was a pre-planned speech. I'll end it there. Uh, but thank you for letting me say that, Duncan.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate your feedback. Announcements and staff report. It was in the memo. Memo, right? Everyone read it? Any commissioner?
The only um additional staff report item is, I just wanted to mention that we did today. Um, we have UPWP um project funding to do a collaboration with Burlington, South Burlington, Essex Junction, and Winuski um for education and outreach related to infill housing. Um, so we had a meeting this afternoon at the RPC um with the planning directors of, of those municipalities and myself who's not a planning director, but hey, here we are. Um, and uh the intention being is that we sort of all work together instead of each individually developing our own education materials, our own workshops, our own events, and sort of all collaborate to do the same things. Um, not necessarily regulate everything in the same way, because we don't and we won't into the future. Um, but you know, if you have a, how, you know, what can I do with my single, single-family home lot? And, or what is an ADU, or those kinds of questions, you know, going all the way back to kind of the glossary of planning, things like what is a setback, what is frontage, you know, things that enable people to engage with their respective planning departments. Um, so we did kick that off today, and I'm, I'm pretty excited about that. Um, on the sort of non-regulatory side of our work is doing all our regulations and doing all the changes that we've done in the last year or so. Um, but then thoughtfully and equitably pushing that out to make sure that the public is aware of what is possible now and what has changed and what they can come in to talk to us about.
Just sort of in light of that, I have a bit of an announcement for anybody who's interested. Um, I came across an invitation to a um I guess it's continuing education program about using basically a how-to uh create housing from shipping containers. And uh some people might have visited the one that was a Shelburne Museum for a little while. Um, it was lovely. It was surprisingly really nice. And um, and so in light of, you know, the adaptive reuse and, you know, housing issues and things like that, I thought probably would be pretty interesting to familiarize ourselves with what can and what is being done with shipping containers for affordable housing. It's not as bad as it sounds.
Well, I think that that look, looking really cool. No, I didn't, but I've seen others. I think they're, they can be really attractive.
You know, it kind of had this object, you know. Like this, it was, yeah, it was, but it was absolutely beautiful.
When is this meeting?
It's not a meeting. But I can send you a link uh for it if anybody's interested.
I would love the link. I'd like to learn more about that.
It's not free. Which I probably would do it if I wasn't going away the next day and it wasn't free.
Why don't you send it to me and I can distribute it to the commission?
Okay, well, the program is tomorrow. And I'm not sure what time tomorrow, because I didn't sign up for it myself. I'm actually doing another one at noon tomorrow, but uh, but anyway, the topic, you know, if anybody's interested, I I'm sort of happy to gather more information about it and because uh I, I think it's kind of an interesting thing to consider.
Be a great place for college students.
Yeah, young people. Could be a pretty, a pretty, you know, funky neighborhood. Certainly attract younger people and perhaps old hippies too. You know, anybody who's kind of
Look like Expo sixty-seven.
You know, real traditional looking housing would prove.
Well, there is one kind of like that on um Spear Street, I think. Past um Barstow Road on the right. You know where the baseball field is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you mean?
Yeah, it's in, it's in Shelburne, I think. And it's set among other big houses. But it looks like it's made from shipping containers. It's very modern. And I think it's really attractive. If I were ever to build a house, that's what I would want to build. Something like that.
Is this supposed to mean, like, is this came place like locally or is it kind of in some other?
No, it's a, it's a company that puts these on
Gotcha, gotcha.
Think nationally or internationally.
Does it have her one slight thing that you can trick with them is that when you insulate them a lot as you They get a little small. They get a little, I mean, it's unusual. This becomes a little Still definitely inflation.
Same approach you use to, you know, old, really old houses. You know, which are virtually impossible to insulate properly. You have to build walls inside and then insulate everything between that. We did that.
Well, that's what they found with the airport insulation program. Some of the houses they've had to build.
Alright, we're gonna move on to number five. Uh, number five in the agenda.
Those number five, yeah. So there's a number five in the agenda about municipal planning grant. Um, it is not number five in the memo because I wrote the memo and then number five arrived. So number five is not the same number five. Um, but yeah, so this is sort of self-explanatory. We do this almost every year. Um, the city has the opportunity to apply for a municipal planning grant from the state. Um, every year they come out with sort of usually along the same lines with sometimes slightly different um criteria that they're going to be giving more points or less points um to different things. So uh after twenty twenty-three, they gave more points to flood mitigation projects, things like that. Um, we funded in the last few years the Equity and Planning Outreach Program uh project through Toolkit, through this program. Um, so that was very successful and that was partially timed to um coincide with when they were doing some prioritizing of, of equity. So this year, uh, we've proposed the Buildings and Thermo, Buildings and Thermal Sector Climate Action Implementation Plan. Um, the memo is fairly self-explanatory. It's a, the implementation plan for one section of the Climate Action Plan. Uh, it's something that the city was already planning to do, so the timing works out really well. It's not something that we've already started or something that we would be starting too late to be make use of the funding, and it fits into one of the state priorities um related to climate uh resilience and mitigation.
I think this is great.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's well timed and well planned. Um, any, go ahead, Donna.
Well, I read through it and I think it's great to be addressing this uh now. Um, my, my brain, because I, you know, I was on the Climate Action, you know, committee. And, you know, we kept wanting to talk about all kinds of specific things and they're like, no, 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 that's not the time. You know, it's the implementation plan. So I just wondered, because with the Transportation Implementation Plan, it seemed like everything was addressing, well, by, by necessity, it was addressing what the city can do. And certainly infrastructure-related and things like that. And for the most part, it wasn't really addressing anything that this, that, you know, might be encouraged of citizens in the city to do. You know, it, it focused on simply things that the city could do without relying on anybody else. And I wondered if this was going to be the same kind of thing, because by the very nature, these are private buildings. You know, the city's already doing quite a lot, you know, and I, I really applaud what the city's done. But getting, getting private individuals to um invest in upgrading their own buildings, I, I wondered like what sway does the city really have in doing that and you know, and because that, that, that's always been a concern of mine, you know, and just like I mean, I worked for, I worked for Green Mountain Power, you know, and we had more ability because they were our customers. You know, to get people to do things, and even that was really hard. Um, so I'm just curious about that, you know, this implementation, particularly because it's planners who are writing it, right? And, and not necessarily people who have implemented.
So it's our new climate action manager, Bettina McGess, would be the lead on this project.
Okay, and her background is not in buildings?
Um, it's in civil engineering and
So I, I, you know, I just, I think it needs to be a public discussion about, you know, and it will be a public discussion as part of the implementation plan. But I do, I am concerned about that, you know, because I, in terms of transportation planning, I think a whole lot of people really take it seriously. And a whole lot of people just keep driving their gaskets and trucks everywhere at top speed, you know? And like, I don't, I don't know how you reach people on this, on some people on this subject. And your goals are really, I think, meeting the goals are dependent upon reaching other individuals who own property and businesses are big. And like, you probably don't own your space, do you? You do rent your space, yeah. And, and so you're dealing with layers of ownership and things like that, which
So I would
Which are hard.
Yeah, and, and duly noted, and I think that is a, a major part of doing the plan, of writing the plan, is, is addressing these things. So the last paragraph in the memo, um, a review process will take stock, talk of these efforts. Um, identifying available resources as well as barriers to implementation. Staff and any consultants engaged will be gathering data, outreach to the public and interested parties, listing a bunch of people, and then drafting a plan of action. So I think that's something that is part of the substance, and it's something that is absolutely to be raised in the substance of, of having this we have. Um, but I just wanted to know that we, I just wanted to let you know that we're very aware that it's a, it's a, a much different thing to be doing an action plan for or an implementation plan for Buildings and Thermal than it is for um government operations. So it's
And it would have been nicer, all the types of things that were discussed during the Climate Action Plan, if those had been recorded and handed over to because everybody can say, not now, not now, not now, that's too specific. You know, there were a lot of good ideas, but
Donna, I, I can speak to the business community. If, if there's enough of an economic incentive, that will drive it. I mean, it's, you know, money talks. Sorry, but if there's enough of an economic incentive, I also think that personal, personal homeowners would, would see that benefit too. If, if it's clearly laid out, yes, there's an outlay initially, but the recoup is here.
Well, so, and that's tricky, because you know, does the city get involved in actually sending people out? Because, you know, the efficiency programs
I don't think we're sending people out, but I think that we're, you know, if we can educate and put the knowledge out, the, the information out there saying, here's, here are the economic benefits of doing this. You know?
You hope.
That's, that, that, from a business owner's standpoint, looking at it from a dollars, a sense standpoint, that, that's what would appeal to me. And I'm sure I'm not the only one in that.
No, I mean, that's pretty much the way many people look at it, but you know, it also is, which, which economic criteria are you looking at? Because even the city tends to look at payback, which is not the way, not the way you really need to be looking at it today. You need to be looking at what's your, what's your ten-year cost. You know, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit different perspective in looking at it. It's like, what do I save next year versus what do I save over ten years? And businesses sometimes can't afford to look that way because they don't know. They don't know what you're gonna do, or you might be in a different space, you know? So it's, it's, it's it's just, I'm just putting it out there that I have concerns about to do this uh effectively.
What do you, you need uh?
The motion.
The motion?
Because the, the process for municipal planning grant is you, we present it to you after, you know, sir, our, our staff recommendation. If you had something else, you were like, oh, I'm gonna, something else. This is our best recommendation. This is what we recommend. The Planning Commission statutorily has to recommend it to the uh city council, and only, only city council can say, yes, please, on behalf of the city, apply for that grant. So just for, just reiterating, it's, this is just application for a grant. Um, we may or may not get the money. Um, they tend to both match their interests for the, the given years, topics of choice, and also kind of distributing money around. Um, you know, they're not going to give all the money to Chitting, Chitting County. They're going to spread it out through, through the state. So it kind of depends also on who else applies and that we got one a couple of years ago. And so, um, just saying, it's a, it's a grant application. It's not a good deal.
Just, just add one thing just for the record, and that is that Burlington years ago did a really excellent outreach um to commercial, all commercial properties. And they have a very, very effective commercial energy efficiency plan. Um, and I think you know, I think this, this, this is gonna help, but I think we could borrow very much on Burlington's. The only difference is we don't have our own electric department. You know, which gave them a little bit more pull um to say, you must, or else.
We turn off the power.
Right.
Turn it off, but you know, they, they have the ability to um sort of put certain fees in there if people, you know, were using e- energy inefficiently. They could create an economic incentive.
Well, I think this is a great idea. So I move to recommend that the city council approve the application for a municipal planning grant to fund preparation of the Buildings and Thermal Sector Climate Action Implementation Plan.
Do I have a second?
I will second it. After all that.
All in favor? That is unanimous. Grant away. Alright, now we are on to, let's make, that's right, we are on to number six. Williston Road zoning. Uh, Nick, I think you were gonna
Yes, I'd be happy to. So um, one of the uh, it was gonna be a brief reintroduction to the project that we're um only beginning in earnest now. On the work plan is an item, uh, this practice considering re-designating Williston Road segment from low-scale neighborhood to medium-scale neighborhood. Kind of straightforward, but there are a few things that are worth considering as we uh get started with um going down that road, so I just want to lay those out. So first of all, the segment in question, um, you'll notice in the memo that I sent around about this, uh, there's a, there is a small map, but you know, just verbally, we're talking about the section of
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be
That'd be awesome if you put it up on the screen.
Thank you, Kelsey.
There you go.
There.
It was just a little slow.
It doesn't mean it's slow. So um, the area we're talking about is this section of Williston Road between the form-based code area to the west um, and to the higher-scale mixed-use uh zoning district to the east. It starts roughly around Victory Drive and to the west, it's around where the rotisserie is. So north and south, the, um, and along the frontage itself, uh, the zoning district is the low-scale neighborhood. Um, however, the historic, the historic pattern of settlement for the, especially for the parcels along the frontage, it does include some sort of commercial, public buildings. So we've got a few um assisted living facilities, childcare facilities, a couple houses of worship, um, and some multifamily uh dwellings. Um, I've known, most of these are pre-existing, now considered pre-existing, non-conforming uses in, under the current zoning uh regulations. So if they were to do any kind of singular, if they wanted to do any kind of significant expansion or change of use, they would be limited by the allowed uses in the uh low-scale neighborhood. So that's one important consideration to keep in mind. Um, and uh, the other one is simply that this is a high tra, fairly high-traffic corridor. There are bike lanes. It is served by GMT buses. It's near the, fairly near the airport, and it's between two areas that are both growing and already um fairly uh fairly well-trafficked and um and busy in terms of, you know, mixed uses, commercial, uh residential, retail, office, et cetera. So the, especially the parcels along Williston Road, um, already have a lot of sort of general tie-in in terms of feel to the neighboring zoning business. Um, which is one, you know, compelling reason to consider uh upzoning to medium-scale neighborhood, which would be the, sort of the next step in terms of, in terms of allowing, uh, a lot of uses. Um, that being said, there are, this presents an interesting case because basically if you go one farther, any farther than one parcel deep, um, you get, end up in a neighborhood that is dominated by single-family homes, and small ones at that. So the density falls off rapidly as you get farther into the neighborhood. So um, any kind of upzoning would likely have to be limited to an area around uh Williston Road, and that would require some, is gonna, it requires some amount of judgment call about how far back, you know, how far north and south would the medium-scale neighborhood go. Um, couple other considerations, uh, the allowed uses for medium-scale neighborhood are not well, they're, the, the main change in, between LSN and MSN is in commercial and retail and public spaces. The only real difference in allowed residential uses is that they, the MSN allows multi-family homes from five to twelve units. Otherwise, L, uh, LSN is limited to four units per parcel. So um, the resident
Four units per building.
Oh, sorry, for four units, building, thanks, Kelsey. So the um, the, the difference in, the, the potential difference in terms of change in residential uses is small compared to that uh of commercial. And commercial um uses would allow for uh consumer-facing commercial, um, small and medium-scale and as well as a number of other offices, like general office and stuff like that. So the main potential, um, one potential effect of changing the zoning district along this area is that it could allow for um more intensive commercial development. Some of that could be potentially of the kind of strip development that has been a concern in the past. Um, other than that, the, you know, the, the, the um process is fairly simple. We would, you know, um uh, an area would be selected, staff would do some analysis to determine, to make some recommendations about where exactly uh what that boundary ought to be. And then we would uh draw a new zoning map that, that cha, that changes some amount of what's out, what is currently LSN to MSN and advanced census zoning.
So a couple of additional things, um, and I apologize, we've already One is sort of the balance of what Nick said with sort of the risk of strip development um, and the u- utilization of one of our major transit corridors. So we have, and I don't know if you mentioned that, but we have bus service down Williston Road and we don't on most, most streets. Um, but you don't want to see strip development necessarily in the way that we, you know, you saw in the fifty through nineties. Um, and then the other is, it's not a, a concern, it's just something that we, we would be doing some significant public outreach on this. Um, because as it does affect both people who um live right along the corridor, but also um, there would be opinions that people would want to share from who are living in the Mayfair Park neighborhood and the Chamberlain neighborhood. Um, kind of what is the difference between the, the zoning districts? Um, there's also, it's not my favorite, but the potential to kind of um compromise and do sort of a, a diff, another zoning district. If we, if there was something that we were like, we really like this part of MSN for this area because of transit, um, or fold it into the Transit Overlay District regulation somehow, you could kind of split the difference between what is there now and what could be there in the future. Um, so Nick's presentation today is just kind of the reintroduction to the topic. This is something that is both in our city plan and in the policy priorities and strategies. To just, not to, not with a foregone conclusion of we're going to do changes in this area, but to, to really look and um thoughtfully think about what, what should be in this area, because it's a long stretch of transit-served road that is currently single-family homes. Um, and actually, honestly, some non-conforming businesses. You know, small, the small florist, the um nursing service, there's a few businesses that are sprinkled through there. Um, the senior housing is actually not allowed in the zoning district that it is now, that, that already exists.
Switching to MSN would make all those compliant.
Yes.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
Which would allow them to expand.
Yes, it would expand. They could change, they could Yes, it would expand, they could change, they could, you know, so it does have some benefit for the, for the pro- properties that are already there. Um, so it's all things that we would be exploring, we just wanted to bring it up again as. This is on our radar, this is something that we're working on behind the scenes, particularly Nick. Um, including doing an outreach plan for um, business owners, property owners. You know, transit users, the business, general business community, um, other stakeholders as necessary.
So I, I guess my, after reading this, my, my biggest concern or thought was the boundaries.
Yeah.
You know, determining the boundaries, and, and, and you, you touched on it, and I, yeah, I was looking at the map thinking. There's all variances of lot sizes there.
Promising, like.
Is it, you know, it, it, I just, just, uh, yeah, and again, this is, I'm getting ahead of you guys. Is it, property is, would it be built by lot? How would we do that?
Yeah.
That's, that's quite, one of the questions.
Yeah.
This process would try to determine, is to try to figure out the.
Yeah.
Yes, some of the, the most logical way of doing that.
As a, as a general practice, we like to follow lot lines, um, so you don't have sort of half a lot that has some regulations and another half, the other half that doesn't. Especially when it's off by like a silly amount, like if it's a huge lot and you div- divide it in half. That makes more sense than dividing off the last thirty feet of a lot. Um, so for example, the, the sort of logical thing is if you see the depth of the small, of the home lots, yeah, Nick's cursor is just about there.
Yeah.
Um, on either side, um, or you could potentially just have it on one side or the other side if that made sense. Um, and then you would have to make decisions about things like the large lot on the north side that Nick's pointing at now. Um, you could go up and follow the lot line, but then that sort of makes that zoning district kind of incur like. It goes, it puts into the neighborhood in a different way. Um. Um, so it's, that's part of the conversation, um, but as a general, general idea, we like to follow lines if, if and when it makes sense.
Yep.
I, I'm just curious, the bright green, it isn't, is that? That's Garvey Park. That. It's a long skinny, public owned park, it has a path that goes straight through the middle. Okay, so that's not, yeah, it, it's a gully though, too, isn't it? Uh, no, it's pretty flat, it's, it's a. So where's the fire district in here? There's a fire district somewhere. South of Williston Road, it's in Mayfair Park. Oh, okay, I was on the wrong side of the street, didn't I? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean.
Go ahead, go.
Yes, yeah, tend to be medium scale neighborhood, yeah, that, that, that feels pretty reasonable, I mean, frankly. With the lot sizes, I'm not that worried about strip development.
It would require some kind of like consolidation for sure.
Yeah, which.
People would have to buy like five houses in a row.
Practice doesn't, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, the only one where it happened is the big one that's already developed with the, what's that, that's the senior housing.
Right.
Which frankly kind of already is a massive surface law, like I'm most, I mean, frankly, less like developed anyways, but.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's also like medium scale neighborhood, that's like most of Kennedy, and this feels like, you know, not the same context, but like. This almost feels more built up and kind of urbanized than Kennedy does, it feels a little weird to have this low scale and not be medium scale, and I kinda. But is, i- i- if we're worried that this, that medium. Scale is too much for this area, that makes me think, well, maybe then we need to re, we need to revisit medium scale at that point, because if, if you like, if it's too much for here.
What's it good for?
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, is it too much for Kennedy too, like, you know, I mean, that kind of feels, they, they have, like. You know, they're not exactly the same, but yeah, it's, you know, I wouldn't be more hesitant, I mean, I wouldn't want to put this on like city center Form Based Code, you know. T five, whatever, but it feels like, especially if you're gonna have the uses already, you're kinda commercial, like I'm just. This feels like this, any changes here would be pretty gradual, frankly, just based on how it's already built up.
So it sounds to me, and you know, jump in Nick, that there is appetite to keep working on this and to bring this back to the Planning Commission when we have some, some. Solid recommendations or a couple of good options, um, primarily Nick, and uh, kind of bring the substance to discussion then.
I mean.
Actually, Donna, go ahead.
Yeah, um, it'd be interesting to know, it's like, how many of those single family homes are owner occupied? And how many are rented, cause you know, I was surprised, like on Mary Street, I thought, oh, that's gonna, that's really gonna disrupt, but it turned out.
It's all rented.
It's all rental housing anyway, and so the developers are just, whoever owns it probably has. You know, some future idea of what they wanna do, I was curious if the same thing was happening there.
I don't think it's as homogeneous as it is, um, on Mary Street. Um, but it, it, it's likely a mix, we don't, I would, we can, Nick can look into that.
Yeah, it would be, it would be interesting to know, cause see how much backlash. You know, it's like, what, what are we, you know, uh, if we propose something like that, are there gonna be people feeling very much a setback or? Um, about it.
Hey, hey, and one of the things you sort of lose this too, I mean, Burlington recently basically just upzoned. Strip style corridors along all the transit corridors, like essentially they've done something pretty simple and. This feels, now that approach, I mean, that seems popular over there certainly, and this feels like.
Popular.
Uh, well, okay, it passed at least.
It did pass.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It was, it was popular with many people who's.
Maybe.
Who like their, like views.
Yeah, fair, okay, this depends on who's having talked to. Okay, maybe, maybe a bit of bubble when talking to, um.
About like views here.
Yeah.
Right, no views.
No views.
Um, regardless, yeah, I mean, like, long story short, things worth looking into and my tentative ideas, yeah, everything applying this road, you know. Don't need to go too deep or anything, but we can, you know, staff and re, get it further.
Right.
So is that.
That's sufficient.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Onward. Number seven, temporary and seasonal uses, reintroduction to topic.
True, so I'm also going to be tackling that one, just pull up a quick, um. Powerpoint, uh, while I talk about that, so basically, um, this project, uh. Originally started as the, um. As the, uh, rewrite to the Peddlers Ordinance and remains grounded in that, but as uh, we got. Uh, it did some research, um, about updating the Peddlers Ordinance to promote, largely to promote food trucks and make. You know, any necessary considerations for city center, the new city hall and all this new sort of like, like. Sort of semi-public civic space, um, a number of interesting things came up and, um, so that has expanded a little bit. And we wanted to just take the time to bring the Planning Commission up to speed on where we're thinking, where we're uh, thinking about heading with this and uh, just. Pause quickly to get on the same page and get any feedback that you both wanna offer, so, um. Just, um, so, the. Um. Sorry. Okay, so, quick look at current regulations, um, on. Uh, retail, commercial stuff that is um, temporary, well. And, and permanent, just wanted to browse and sort of what we, in the way, various ways that we regulate retail and commercial, focusing on those things because. When we're talking about the Peddlers Ordinance, we are talking about retail or commercial operations, there's no residential. Or sort of industrial component to this, so just from a zoning perspective, we were talking in a land use perspective, we're only talking about. The buying and selling of things. Um, currently, we have a Peddlers Ordinance that it, that uh, applies citywide, it is, um. It applies to specifically to any kind of mobile vendors, um, that would be, that would include like food trucks and ice cream trucks. Um, it also applies to things like seasonal sales, we see the Christmas tree sales that happen each year across the street. Those uh, folks pull up Peddlers permit every year to do so, any door-to-door sales, magazines, subscriptions, that sort of thing. Um, is regulated under the Peddlers Ordinance, it also um, mentions by name farmers markets. Although we currently don't have any applicants or running farmers markets, so that's just kind of something that is, is regulated, but is not. Um, there doesn't seem to be any real momentum towards having that, that's a bit of an aside. Um, so the Peddlers Ordinance sees fairly minimal amount of interaction from the public, we only get one or two permits a year. Um, there is a fairly extensive permitting process that goes into. The, that is prescribed by the Peddlers Ordinance involving background checks, a lengthy service of pro- uh, process serving. Interaction with the city clerk, um. This hasn't been updated since the nineteen eighties and legal changes since then basically make most of that process moot. So effectively, planning and zoning and the clerk's office work together to uh. Pro- process the handful of Peddlers permits that come in per year, but it's, it's a, uh, it's, it's the wrong tool for the job, basically. So that's what brought us, that's kind of what brought us to the point where we are right now, where we are seeking to modernize the Peddlers Ordinance. So that it applies to the actual kinds of temporary, um, and mobile foods like sales that we see. Um. On a side note, exempt from permitting, um, are sort of. Very ephemeral, very temporary, short-term things like yard sales, you know, day, like day events. You're having, you know, um. A party in your, you know, in your backyard, you have a food, and you have like a food, invite a food truck to come serve your guests, something like that. These are, you know, auctions, like these are specifically called out in our, in our LDRs as things, as activities, land use activities. That do not require any kind of permitting. Um, and then of course, we're all familiar with uh, the, the things that we permit through our LDR, so anything that is permanent. Um, occupies a, a space and is intended to occur indefinitely, needs a site plan and or a zoning permit. So that's where we're at right now. Um, I've also called out the question marks because that's just to indicate. That things that we haven't necessarily considered would, that, but that don't fall into either of these categories would likely be regulated by the Peddlers Ordinance. If someone were to propose them today, but like I said, we really get almost no Peddlers permit, um, application. So there's very little to regulate, um, and uh. The long, the short of it is that the, the.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah, please.
Something that we do get that is, um, part of this, this whole landscape is, you know, you, you own a business and you wanna be outside. For, you know, the summer, for three months of the year, you wanna have every Saturday, put something, put, you know, a bunch of tables outside, like that's something that comes up that. Right now, um, in most cases triggers site plan, um, amendment, which is a whole process and it's all, cause you have to be like, it's in this. These three parking spaces and it's, that, it affects traffic in these ways, it, it has to go through that whole process. Um, so, outdoor uses associated with existing businesses is part of this landscape. Um, not necessarily that it would fall into the Peddlers Ordinance, but it is something that we do get occasionally, you know, people wanna put their stuff, their stuff outside for the summer. Um, and it ends up being sometimes a, a mismatch between process and impact.
That's right. We also don't have, um, a way, uh, thank you, Kelsey, we also don't have a way of, um. Giving people a ready answer when, uh, if we ever get questions about food trucks, where they can operate and, um, and, and any rules that are specific to those. Um, which means that a food truck could set up shop right outside of a restaurant and there'd be nothing to stop that. We wouldn't necessarily, that, that could be a, a scenario that we might want to, um, discourage. Also, the bur- sort of the burden of application for the Peddlers permit means that they would likely have to be paying seven hundred dollars. For a, uh, a permit to operate, um. Uh, you know, a, a few days a month or something like that, so the rules don't, are not really right-sized. Uh, in either direction for the sort of thing that, that what does fall under the Peddlers. Uh, ordinance for a lack of there being more nuanced regulation. So, um, what we are, uh, proposing to do is move in a direction that looks a little bit more like this. So, we would continue exempting from permitting the things that we already do. Stuff that only happens for, uh, in one, one or two days a year and is mostly sort of personal. Uh, business, like, you know, small events, yard sales, et cetera. The Peddlers Ordinance would continue to, uh, to regulate door-to-door sales. Um, because there is a strong, uh, public safety and pub- and public nuisance, uh, regulating component to that. That we feel like should be, uh, carried through. Um, and it will also continue to regulate food trucks, but with updated regulations. That are more nuanced and specific to both the operations of food trucks and also, uh. The, this sort of new, um, space that we have here, um, on, on Market Street. Um, yeah, I'll pause here. So what's the difference between a food truck and a seasonal food unit? That's a great question.
That is a great question, yeah.
Seasonal food unit is a current land use category in the LDRs. Um, along with like general commercial or, you know, um. Uh, house and worship or anything like that, so something that would be in table C one. And, uh, what it isn't, it's basically long-term food truck or a lot of other places would. Would regulate it as like a Cecil snack bar. And it'll allow, getting a permit for that would allow, uh, it's a site plan, it requires site plan review, that would require, uh, that would. Allow someone to take, basically take a food truck, chalk the wheels, set up shop for about nine, for I think it's. Eight or nine months out of the, out of the year. So. But I mean, it's like, your average food truck, it's often a person's business, they're probably operating it like for most summer months, so like the. So to avoid going, I assume, cause I'm assuming the Peddlers Ordinance is a smaller, more lightweight kind of permit, that's easier to get compared to seasonal temporary use permit. Ideally, that's what we like. Yeah. It's just, I, I'm just wondering if we're gonna have this weird. It feels weird, cause these food trucks are probably operating seasonally, is it gonna be something, oh, you have to move every fourteen days or something to avoid, like.
So.
That, that's why I only guess concerned with hangups.
So we're actually moving those seasonal units down from full site plan.
Fair, fair.
So they're moving down a little bit and, um, the idea is, I think, that of a food truck is, you know. There's a hockey game at Karen's and someone wants to park outside and sell tacos, like for one, for one day and.
Isn't that exempt from permitting on their outdoor events then?
No, no, that, like, the, the Karen's is the hockey arena, and so like. Outdoor events are private, right?
Yeah, that would, that would be.
Like a, yeah, someone's having a big party in their backyard. Well, there's other things, if you wanted to like rent the park or something, there's other, like, recreation permits and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, this is more like there are, um. I mean, in other towns, I can't, there's not a good example in South Burlington, but there'll be a place that like is only open during this, during the summer. Um, but has tables and umbrellas and like there's more to it outside, more sort of semi-permanent.
Like farm and foragers down on the waterfront.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, 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 that is a seasonal.
Yeah.
The farm reporters, there was one in Colchester about fries, it was like french fries and stuff over by Big. Bayside, whatever.
Yeah.
There was one there, um. So you, you see them sometimes where it's just, you know, it's a fry truck and it's parked somewhere, but it has more to it, um, and so there is value to the property. Or to the business owner to sort of be in one place, sort of as a restaurant, but not being a restaurant. It's still giving them a c- a break from being a whole restaurant.
Yeah. Yeah.
Beansy's Bus is, yeah, that's in the same, that's in a similar category. Um, I don't think, we haven't, again, this is the sort of reintroduction to the topic, we haven't, Nick hasn't worked through the, like, nuts and bolts of it. I wouldn't assume that the seasonal temporary use permit is going to be so much more onerous than the Peddlers Ordinance. Um, that it would make someone's business decision for them, it would be. It would be, it would be interesting.
Well.
I mean, if someone wants to move to get from one to the other, maybe, but it's something that, that's something that needs to be fleshed out more in the.
Gotcha.
In further discussion.
It always is sort of, would it be, when it sends it almost trying to. Combine the Peddlers and the seasonal temporary use permit into one kind of order, and then it's like, oh, Peddlers only have to do with the first half of it, and then we also have these extras. Like site plan kind of things like. That is, that is more or less where we're going. Okay, okay, yeah. So what we identified is that, you know, and, and I'll just go back to our, our prior one here, is that there. We felt like certain things were over-regulated, certain things were under-regulated, there was this missing category of sort of lightweight but falling, you know, like. Sort of nimble and flexible to allow seasonal businesses and sort of new ideas as they come up to be permitted but reviewed along the way. Um, and, but not maybe necessarily given indefinite dispensation to, to, to operate the way a site plan would. So, we're kind of, the, what we're kind of envisioning is if someone want, you know, let's say the U Mall or something. Wanted to have a, allow a, um, Disney part of its parking lot for a seasonal sale that occurred on, oh, sorry. Let's say Saturdays or something like that, then there would be, they would apply for what we're calling right now a seasonal and temporary use permit. Um, that would allow, uh, to, uh, to set up shop or have a client or like have a tenant set up shop. And operate that business there on a seasonal and temporary basis. Um, and then the, and, you know, we already kind of do this with that, with the Peddlers permit, with the, um. For instance, the Christmas tree sales, um, but like I said, that's a seven hundred dollar permit that required, it currently takes. Um, a, a longer. Um, a longer application period and it's just not right sized for um the sort of thing that we're talking about. And so the proposal is to create this new category um likely under the ordinances so we can make it a little bit faster in terms of. Application time and turnaround. Um, and part of the project that we're, you know, reintroducing you folks to. Is to figure out what the appropriate guardrails around that new category would be, like what would the what would the criteria for application be? When would we, when when would we tell folks, actually, you don't need to, one of these permits, you'll you'll be fine with a peddler's permit or. That sounds too intensive for what you're proposing under this regulation, you're gonna need to apply for a zoning permit or a site plan.
Okay.
Yes, Donna.
Um, well, you started sort of with an example and it brought some questions to mind, so say the U Mall wanted to do a craft show. Or something, set up a big tent for that. Would that be, that would, but what would that fall under? And then would the individual vendors in there? All fall underneath that one main category or they would they each have to have their own?
Peddlers.
Good question.
No, that would probably be one, one permit with one event and the individuals wouldn't have to, it'd be sort of an umbrella for the whole thing. Um, a single event, if that was just one day, like it's July twelfth or whatever, that would probably fall into the exemption.
Probably be a weekend or.
Yeah, or a weekend, that's, that would probably.
Be a little bit.
That would probably fall into the exempt from permitting category, like things like the Doubletree across the highway, they have. You know, a craft show, like the other thing to note is that some of this does apply for indoor things as well. Um, sort of temporary indoor uses, yeah, that are that if they're different from the primary use. So for example, um, just a an example we came up with, if you have a hotel and has a large lobby and then during as. As you mentioned, sort of during the holiday season, they wanted to have a a a craft area, but it was for three months or two months or something. In the lobby where artisans sort of set up things, that's a different use than the accommodations use. So you could get, you could get that permitted instead of being a change of use for this part of your lobby, you can get it through this process. Have there sort of be permitted permitted to do that kind of thing. Um. Donna, I think a good, a reasonable answer to your question is there's still a threshold under which something is. Short enough in time and small enough that it wouldn't trigger any of this. Um, it would still fall into those exceptions, um, sort of one off events, yeah. So, yeah, I think that's. It's a, yeah, just sort of reintroducing what we've been working on, flagging that it's been um. Something that Nick's been kind of percolating on for a bit and uh that you'll be seeing more of.
Yeah, we should have some some drafts pretty soon, so.
Yeah, I guess, yes, like so like final brief comment, yeah, is just like, I guess, just make sure we're kind of being very explicit about. What exactly we're trying to put guardrails against, you know what I mean, and really trying to be clear that we're doing. The absolute minimum amount of. Pay for them essentially for those for those city goals, cuz I still wanna, you know, you hear, I feel like half the like really good restaurants in Burlington, or I was like, oh, we started out as a food truck. You know what I mean, like you wanna kind of make it easy for people to kind of enter this space, you know, and cuz the whole point of you, food truck and a restaurant because it's a lower investment. You know what I mean, like, I don't know, like, I I certainly see. May maybe a little biased, I'm certainly, well, when I was living in California, there are like unlicensed food trucks everywhere.
Yeah.
Most of the time, I'm not saying it always happens, most time, the community loves them, they're great. Yeah, would it may maybe it would be permanent, but like, I guess I've been the area where it's like food trunks ram rampant and. I haven't seen that many downsides with it usually in my experience, so I guess I wanna be very specific over what exactly we are. Guardrail against and do the minimum we need to do the guardrail against that, I I I whatever that is.
Yeah, and the the very last related thing is that the city is currently, it's not in our department, um primarily working on parking. Um, so parking in city center, that's um a a parking management system. Um, so we'll eventually be going to some version of paid parking in um the market, definitely the Market Street Garden Street kind of area. Um, so some of this will dovetail into some of that, you know, paid parking, how many, could you have a whole street that's food trucks or?
Yeah.
Cuz part of the parking discussion and wanting to have spots that turn over for some for the like commercial uses, you know. You don't want someone parked outside a coffee shop for eight hours.
Okay.
Um, so some of that's dovetailing into the same.
I also obviously the argument did if they're going to be on public lands versus private lands that also.
There's other things.
That like if you're if they're parking a street versus they're parking someone's yard, that's a very different question.
Yeah, so those are all.
Um, are we good with commissioner feedback on that? Yeah, okay, we have a member of the public, Ryan.
Yeah, maybe this is more directed for Kelsey's consideration. Um, I go to uh hotels for dance competitions.
Mm-hmm.
And at every single one of those competitions, there are vendors, there are people selling shoes, other. Dancing hootchramon, there are masseuses, there are actors.
One off, one off sale, retail sales in that kind of situation is is. For uh would currently and would still fall under the exemption, uh the exemptions, cuz it's it's limited in time and in space generally.
Because it's so short.
Yeah.
That would be an investment post to like, yeah.
Yeah, this is more like if you had um a hotel that had a lobby of a certain size and they say, you know what, for the whole month of December. We're going to have various displays of artisan goods that then people can purchase.
Yeah.
By, you know, paying on Venmo or buying at the at the front desk or or whatever, that's truly a retail space. That is a reuse of the area for an extended period of time, so that's sort of the indoor event stuff that I I just mentioned.
And if a hotel was going in, building a lobby with that intention, could they clear all of that through their existing permits? Or does it still need to do this seasonal thing each time?
Um, it would, it would probably depend if they were saying like we're like hotels often have a shop. In them, a a like a shop serving the customers of a hotel is incidental to the hotel, so that's just part of the hotel use. If you were having, it was a certain size and a certain, you know, intensity of retail use, then they would just carve it out as a separate. Um, consumer facing commercial area on their site plan and it would be.
Okay.
Quite easy to do.
Great. All right, we're done with number seven, on to number eight, adaptive reuse and alternative compliance.
Yay. Um, so this is a fairly legalistic memo. Um, just sort of setting up the legal framework of what we can and can't do, um. I'm not the city attorney, so I didn't get into the nuts and bolts of it exactly, but sort of stayed at the highest level that I could. Um, and just outlining what we've talked in the past about adaptive reuse um and about alternative compliance that are two related things. Adaptive reuse being adapting existing buildings and spaces into new uses instead of requiring them to be torn down because they're not. Um, conforming with our current regulations. Um, and then alternative compliance is, you know, you're you're doing a thing and you um. Can't can't meet the regulations in for a certain standard, but you can do something pretty close and meets the same purposes, is that good enough? Um, and how do you put guardrails on good enough in a way that makes it not arbitrary? And not just the DRB deciding, well, that looks good enough and that doesn't look good enough with just sort of from my heart. Um, cuz that's not legal, you can't do that. So I just wanted to lay out sort of the legal framework of what's going on, what we can do, what we can't do, um cuz we can't just sort of rewrite our own version of state rules. Um, unfortunately, but we can't. And and then just lay out uh three, the sort of three pronged approach of what we're trying to do because what we've reckoned, what we recognize is that. We do have still some some buildable lots, but you know, in the tech park area and metal lands, like there's some areas that. Commercial uses can be going into, um but we have a heck of a lot of area that is already built. Um, so it's it is much more environmentally sustainable to let people reuse buildings. Um, that are already there, it is a lot more financially uh sustainable for a startup to do that kind of thing. Um, but we have a good number of buildings that are not currently in compliance with our regulations and. What do we need, what do we want to do to require people to either bring a building into compliance, bring part of a building into compliance? Um, allow them to do a certain thing in a certain way, and I'm speaking very vaguely on purpose because these are things that I need to. Continue to work on and to work with our city attorney about, um cuz some of this is just. Figuring out where we wanna land sort of on the legal spectrum and on the spectrum of um risk.
Would this include um? Sort of mixed use, so an existing strip mall, part of it could be housing and then. It could be some uh a different businesses.
Yeah, yeah, so a strip mall is actually a really good um example because currently we, because now we don't allow parking in the front. And sort of definitionally, a strip mall has parking in the front, um so if someone comes in and they said like the. The one with the bagels and Leonardo's and Chicken Charlie's over here, if someone came in and said, I wanna redevelop this, but I don't have the money to. Replace the building that's thirty feet, forty feet back from the road and put it up next to the road, cuz I would just be rebuilding the building. What can I do in the building to make, you know, add a story and convert half of it to housing and then convert the other, leave the other half restaurant? Or whatever it is.
Uh-huh.
Um, so that is part, that's that's both of these things, it's primarily adaptive reuse, but it you could have alternative compliance where. Okay, you didn't meet the regulation that says no parking in the front, but you didn't add more parking in the front and you um. Reduced the number of spots and added more parking behind, you know, other ways to meet some of the purposes behind the regulations.
And housing would allow you not to, wouldn't require parking behind?
Yes, it would, that's what I'm saying, is that it would, yeah, it would, so then. You could, you'd end up in a situation where you're trying to reuse a building, but it wouldn't, you couldn't do in a way that's compliant with the regulations without tearing it all down. But you want to invest money into it, but you just don't have the money to invest six million dollars, you have one million dollars. Where, what do we let you do, what do we not let you do? Cuz right now we have um different ways that we regulate that. So that goes specifically into the the three things that I sort of outlined as the basics. First, identifying any specific regulations that have become op known obstacles for redevelopment and really looking at those with an um. Critical eye to see how do we make that work better, how do we tweak this, like there could be things that just require little tweaks that would. Still meet the regulations, it just the way that it's written has made it not quite work. Um, the second is how to define alternative compliance mechanism, as I said, that's someone. Who comes in and says like, I'm meeting the purpose of what you're trying to do, I'm trying, like I'm trying my best, but something about my site or my building or whatever makes it. Not possible, can I do this slightly different thing? That is not anticipated by the regulations and how do we allow some of that creative flexibility without opening the door to everything? And then third is adaptive reuse and and primarily that'll be looking at our non-conformities rules. Um, sort of the the threshold triggers for how much can you change a building before you have to be fully compliant with the rules? How much money can you put in, how much of the area can you change? Um, this is also related to when we put in the sizes for the commercial uses. Um, so different sizes of commercial uses are allowed in different districts and before they weren't regulated by size. So you may have a a biz, a building that is currently outsized, it's too big for what is allowed to be in there now and what do, how do, what do, what do we do with that? Um, so those are the three, the three prongs to it is look at our our sort of known sticking points. Um, work on adaptive reuse to see, or I skipped one, alternative compliance. Um, to see how we can let people do things that are still meeting the the purposes without. Meeting the true letter of the regulations and then adaptive reuse, reexamining um. How much someone is allowed to change a building and invest in a building um before they trigger full compliance and. May or may not have to tear a building down. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, back in my life as an architect, I actually worked on several projects like this.
Yeah.
That were adaptive reuse of, some of them were quite old buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those are the fun ones to work on because they're usually pretty sturdy and everything, but I'm thinking like the U Mall or not the U Mall, the uh, yeah, U Mall. That's a really challenging from a fire protection standpoint.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and so the building codes and fire safety codes. Are often harder to meet.
Yep.
Than the zoning.
Yep.
And that might be some direction for you too, you know, to look at, maybe talk to, you know, public safety.
Yeah.
You know, and and bury and say, you know, what are the things that, you know, we can't do?
Yep.
You know, that are beyond beyond what we should allow.
Right.
Versus what makes sense, cuz I I I think that is a very interesting problem to figure out, what do you do with malls? Because it's a problem that people are addressing in many ways all over the country, you know, it's an awful lot of empty malls out there.
Yeah, so that's sort of related to to Helen's example, so what we're talking, one of the things we'll be exploring is. If you wanted to renovate a portion of a building and then you could. Fully renovate that portion and bring that fully up to both zoning and life safety, are you triggering having to do the rest of the building or not? You know, so some of those questions, um especially with larger buildings like malls, we don't have any but old schools. Um, something like, not that they're turning over, but something like the Mill Market Complex, there's sort of a few different pieces to that that is. Currently outsized for being in an LSN zoning district and what can they do on their property without sort of tearing everything down that. Is useful, but maybe requiring some things to be brought up to compliance, so those are all the questions that are in this um project.
The building codes do make it difficult sometimes, you know, cuz they're like, oh, you need a firewall that goes, you know, four feet above the above the roof line.
Right.
Right. How do you even do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, so that's all part of this and the um, yeah, did you?
No, I figured you were saying.
Oh, I was just gonna say that the um. If there were any questions about sort of the legal structure, I'm happy to answer them, but it's. It's more background for everybody to understand where we are and what we may have the opportunity to do or not, unfortunately, we can't, we don't have sort of a. Open blank slate to do whatever we want and I may be saying things that it's like, hey, yeah, we could do that or not that and then, you know, Colin. It's all part of the iterative process where I say, hey, Colin, can I do this? And he said, no, so um.
I was just gonna say, I I would think that um. You know, looking at other communities and seeing what they've done.
Yeah.
Burlington would be a good example, like, I don't know how many other communities in Vermont we have that have, you know, as much of an issue with this as we might. Um, but I would think there'd be a lot of. Pretty good information about what other communities have done.
Mm-hmm.
On this front, uh especially when you've got, you know, that that firewall, let's use your example, but.
Yeah.
The state saying this will.
You gotta do this, yeah.
Gotta do this.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of legal.
We're in an interesting place where we have very few old buildings. That have been renovated in the past, like we don't have the, there's there are places in Vermont that have buildings from the eighteen hundreds that then were renovated in nineteen eighty.
Yeah.
And sort of under the regulations of nineteen eighty, um, we don't have that. Um. And then we have more regulations than many municipalities, most municipalities in the state, so. Um, it's hard to find those comparable communities where it's um. Bringing things up to code, but then that code is not as at is as complex as ours is in certain ways. Um, or is looking towards being more urban and being more walkable and like having sort of these. Um, really progressive, forward looking goals for for our planning. Um.
Massachusetts.
And trying to hit the things. Yeah, yeah, definitely other places in New England um have some of this, um. We do, I mean, we are, we do have some of it in in Vermont, but um. Winewski has had a reasonable amount of their renovation of their mills, but that happened in the eighties. So like it's a different landscape now than it was then, especially with things like building code and energy efficiency.
But I think this is really exciting in terms of how many, um, I mean, I guess they're not dead strip malls, but they don't seem to have a whole lot of traffic. All over the city and that to me, that is an opportunity for some. You know, mixed use and some additional housing as well as um supporting businesses.
Yeah, we're looking at ways to allow partial reinvestment.
That. Could be a way in our, where we already like things dense and they are. Um, to continue with building more housing.
Yep.
Uh, figure out how you can do it immediately, but but I think.
The least, yeah.
I think that's important.
Yep.
Um, so do you need?
We have a project charge on this one.
Really?
Do you need a?
Yes, I do, please.
A motion to move this forward?
Yes, so the project charge is right after the memo, um it's on page four of your. Is that right? Of your packet? No, that's not right, these are internal pages. Um.
It's number.
I don't.
Fifteen.
It's the second, it's the second attachment on number eight, if you have the agenda.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that's a project charger, if you remember, we started doing these last year, um, to really set out the the scope of something cuz. Often we'll have top, we have top that, you know, can run away in various directions, so try to both. Put them, put some boundaries on the topic itself that we're dealing.
Guardrails.
Guardrails, let's just throw guardrails out there. Um, but then also be transparent to the public about, you know, here's a thing we're working on. Um, that's published in our, in our, um, on our website. But before we get all the way through to the draft, it is when, when we publicize L V R amendments. So this is like, here's a thing that we're working on and here's the sort of. Boundaries of it. Um, so is there any?
Charge.
Uh, did everybody read it? Everybody?
The project.
Looks like that.
Yeah, 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 I read that. I was thinking you were talking about something.
Project charge.
Different.
So we need a motion to, uh.
Would be to approve the project charge.
Have a motion.
I, I, I moved that we ad- adopt the uh, adaptive reuse and alternative compliance project charge. As written draft September eighteen twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor? That is unanimous. Charge away.
Yeah, so just for a timeline, um, you're likely not going to see this in the next month or so, like this is something you'll probably see later in November. Um, while I have some like time to kind of work through some details and go back and forth with legal a bit and then. Um, see where we end up with some, some, you know, fairly well-formed options.
Great. Awesome. Alright, on to number nine, the exciting topic of bedrock removal.
And another project charge.
Another project charge.
Speaking of which, so.
Charge.
We love charges.
Yeah, so. That is, yeah, so yes, the project charge attached to the, is there, you'll see, there's a memo and a draft project charge. Um, for available uh, for this, um. Uh, for this topic and um. Approving the project charge is the, the goal for, for putting this on the agenda tonight. So just wanted to start with that and um. Let's, and then let's move on to a quick uh, reintroduction of why we're talking about this and do some background. So. Last time this came up in, uh, at this body, it was during the, um. It was during the approval of the latest round of um, L D R amendments, which um. Uh, then went on to city council. At that meeting, some commissioners requested that this, that discussion on. Further refinement of um, regulations about bedrock removal and noise generated by that activity. Be added to the work plan for uh, the planning commission for this year. And the number of uh, city councilors, when the topic reached them during the L D R amend, uh, adoption process concurred with that. And the, therefore the, the topic, it remains on the work plan. And so we're, tonight we're presenting, um. The work that we've done as staff to try to um, lay out a roadmap for how we can approach this and um. Where we, and the timeline for research and possible areas of research. Uh, for addressing this topic and making sure that we have all of the information that we need to make decisions about, um. Uh, about what to do about, about this issue. So, um. Be, and so as a way of starting that discussion, what I wanted to do is just um. Take a quick look at an overview of what the new regulations that were recently passed do. These were passed, like I said, as part of the latest round of L D R amendments. So these, what came into effect at the beginning of September, they are now in effect. We have not uh, reviewed any um. Uh, uh, applications for land development under these because none, uh, nothing has come in that would trigger them. These new regulations, uh, the purposes that they serve is to balance four elements of bedrock removal. Have duration, so that's the period of bedrock removal from start to finish. Um, the total active time of each day during which there is bedrock removal activity. And also the timing of that during the workday. So under the new regulations, all bedrock removal must occur between the hours of eight AM and five PM. That's blasting, chipping, any kind, and, and any kind of processing.
Um, does this depend on where the project is located?
These are blanket rules for any project that is, that is doing any kind of.
So even if it's like next to a gravel pit and there's no other houses around, they still have to do it?
That is correct. Yeah.
This is what was adopted in. That's, this is why we're going over it again, to make sure everybody's on a level playing field about what was recently adopted in the L V Rs.
Yeah, so that, so duration, um, I jumped a li- a little bit ahead to an actual rule contained in that, but. Talking about these four different things that these regulations are intended to balance, um, duration is one of them. The next is the level of noise. So that's both mo- momentary high intensity noises, such as those generated by blasting. And sustained noise, so chipping. Um, the, it's also balanced, uh, intended to balance the impact to the built environment. So, uh, to balance any kind of impact to public infrastructure and privately built features as well as to existing vegetation. And to balance all these things with cost. Um, that's a specific intent of the new regulations. Um, the way that the regulations function, the way that they are intended, the way that they um, are intended to balance all of those four factors. Is through a tool called the Bedrock Removal and On-Site Processing Plan. This is something that is required if. Any bedrock removal is necessary or reasonably foreseeable during the development review process or zoning permit process. Um, or if blasting is required. And importantly, if there is any kind, if there is, if it becomes apparent that bedrock will need, need to be removed. During the process that has already been permitted, the D R B has the authority or the administrative officer has the authority. To require that construction be halted while that bedrock removal plan is drafted and approved. So if a project kicks off, it all looks good, it all looks clear, and then it turns out that there is bedrock and in fact. Um, that needs, that will need to be removed for it to proceed as permitted. Then the city can compel an applicant or holder of a permit at that point to stop what they're doing in order to address that.
To be one hundred percent clear, because I was a geology major. It doesn't have to be bedrock. It could be a very, very big bowler that they can't dig out. And because we do have glacial erratics that are these big old boulders that it feels like it's bedrock, but it's not technically bedrock. So it is called bedrock. But I'm just making sure we're all clear. It also includes very big rocks that are otherwise difficult to or impossible to remove.
Thanks, Gelsey. This is where your many, many degrees are coming in. Yeah, yeah. Um, there's also a, a de minimis exception. So if bedrock removal is likely to be necessary. But is only what expected to happen for, uh, you know, a, a short period of time, then um. We do allow for hydraulic jack herring ring to be used for, uh, in, in, as long as it does not exceed forty hours total per project. But if that were to, if that, if it, if it, if that were to exceed that, um, if that activity exceeds that, uh, forty hours. Bedrock removal plan is required. So what's in one of these bedrock removal plans? Um, the plan has to detail the location of the removal, the volume that is anticipated to be removed. Any changes to the grade that it will make and the location of where any kind of onsite processing will happen. Uh, so that applicants have to map out the location relative, not just like where it's going to happen, but also. Including their diagrams and their description, any adjacent roads and properties. And then they also have to detail the proposed methods of removal and how any onsite processing that they're going to do of the material that they're unearthing. If blasting is required, uh, under any circumstances, a supplementary blasting plan also has to be submitted. And those are be, to be drafted following the same guidance that the state of Vermont uses for Act two fifty permitting. Which specifically addresses blasting. And then finally, all of the above mentioned, uh, elements of the blasting plan. Must be submitted to the D R B or the administrative officer, depending on, you know, where, what, what kind of application we're talking about. Um, and uh, be passed by them to their satisfaction that those. The activities that those, that blasting plan specifically is describing will properly balance those four uh, elements. Of duration, level of noise, impact of built environment and cost. So, the way that, and I'm. Almost done with my summary of the current regulations, but just want to make sure everyone is, is on board, uh, understands what is currently now in effect. D R B is responsible for reviewing these submitted um, plans, um. Except in the case of like the form-based code areas where it's an administrative officer who administrative review, um. This, the, the city, whether it's the D R B or the, or the administrator, will review those plans to make sure that they balance that, uh, the four objectives. Um, and importantly, and this goes for really, I mean, any other um, part of review, but specific, just to remind folks. The D R B and the, or the administrative officer can order an independent technical review of the submitted blasting plan. If they feel like there is some reasonable questions about it, whether it would be effective, um. This is something that we allow room for, for pretty much any other thing that we enforce. It just doesn't get used that often because. We rarely, you know, are calling in an architect to make sure that like, for instance, a building is exactly the right height as is proposed or something like that. That would be another example of a, of independent technical review, but in this case, we wanted to make it very clear that independent technical reviews are. Uh, considered to be a, um, uh, a go-to, um, in for, part of the enforcement and review mechanism. Um. The D R B and the administrative officer may impose conditions as part of their approval. So in. They, they, they are allowed to condition their approval of the blasting plan on. Certain conditions such as limits to the duration, to um, specific routes for transporting materials. Um, to uh, timing of any kind of blasting or, um, you know, days of the week, that sort of thing. Um, and of course, the, uh, and then also it can, uh, the city can also impose. Notification requirements on applicants as part of their conditional approval, so that applicants, uh, will have to. Uh, note in, you know. Uh, people in the general area, whatever the D R B thinks might be necessary for that. And um, the city also requires reporting on any changes to the blasting schedule. Um, what's not required in the blasting plan, uh, numerical limits on noises. Um, they don't require an applicant to finish work within a predetermined maximum duration. They don't set any distance limits relative to other zoning districts or land uses. They also don't prohibit the city from requesting that an applicant, it is any of those things that I just mentioned. So. The city can say, hey, we would like you to please limit blasting to these many days over the course of this project. Or chipping to these many hours over the course of this project. That can be part of the condition, uh, conditional approval. And they don't allow an applicant from going, uh, from imposing any of those limits on their own. Uh, project voluntarily. So if an applicant wants to say, we are going to stick to. Uh, a schedule that is going to keep blasting and chipping under these many days. Um, that can be formalized as part of, of, of an enforceable blasting or, uh, bedrock removal plan. So, um. That is just, that is currently what is in effect. And like I said, we haven't received any applications for development that would trigger. One of these plans being necessary. Uh, we haven't seen anything come through, uh, for review that would. That is likely to require, uh, bedrock removal. So these remain untested in the, in a real world scenario if they're only a few weeks old. So as we move forward, um, as requested for areas of research, um, we are considering. Like three sort of main buckets of where to. Uh, uh, where to go with research so that we can, um, consider refra- refinements to those. Currently in effect regulations. One, first area would be other communities and industry best practices. Um, to look into what other communities do, what they use, what their successes, that limiting the, um. You have noise and, um. Uh, and uh, side effects from bedrock removal, chipping, blasting, et cetera. Um, and to see how the, and to learn more about how the industry self-regulates these, um, and what they do to limit these effects as well.
Um, I would say that also includes, um, both looking at more rural communities, but also more urban communities. Because related to our previous topic, like we're going to be seeing more redevelopment. Uh, I think the. Primarily development has occurred where it has been the easiest. So it's places where it is not, um, necessary to do bedrock removal, but you never know, things come up. Um, the property across the street here ended up having to do, I think, two or three days of chipping. Um, to be able to put in, and they had no, no anticipation of doing that. So, um. But that would have been de minimis anyway. Um, so. Both looking at how people have regula- how other municipalities have regulated in a more rural. Location, but also in a more urban location. When we're talking about, um, focusing development and having more development. And really utilizing effectively our land that we have and using it efficiently is going to require construction. Near where people are living and working. Um, so. How have people in, in larger cities, primarily more urban areas, dealt with some of those, those things? Because. You know, they, they do demolition in New York City and they do other thing, you know, there's other places that are, that have regulations that deal with things like that. In close proximity to, to humans. Um, and then the other thing I think is included when you were talking about industry best practices is also, um, worker safety organizations.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so things like OSHA at the federal level, but also, um. Just standards that, that construction organizations use and businesses use for exposure for their own workers. Um, is also just one piece of the, the list of things that Nick has been working on, um, compiling.
Yeah, one of the things that could be quite fruitful in learning more about how these, uh, this, this subject could be, could be addressed. Um, another thing to look at, of course, is numerical or quantifiable limits for noise emission, so decibels. Um, vibration, uh, metrics. Um, there are, is a. Fairly large constellation, we've learned, of different ways to measure these. There's average, there's instant, there's momentary. Um, there are different types of decibel, uh, metrics, uh, that measure different frequencies. And so not, and there really doesn't appear to be a single one that is, uh, that is sort of broad enough. To use as an effective tool for limiting or, uh, this, uh, benchmark. For limiting all potential noise emissions and continuing to balance that with other goals and realities of construction. So part of the research we want to do is to look into what options that, uh, are afforded to someone. Or to an entity like the city that is interested in, um, considering those and which ones would be the most fruitful for, for considering. And then, of course, to look into feasibility, um, of using any of these, uh, whether it's, you know, um. More i- quantifiable or more, um, or more qualified, like qualified, um. Regulations, what the enforcement feasibility, uh, that would be, what it would require the city to do, what would require applicants to do to stay compliant. And what those cost impacts would be to the city. Um, would we have to hire extra staff? Would we, um, would we be able to, would this is the sort of thing that, um, applicants are already able to do on their own? Um, what would, what, and what impact would, uh, using these metrics, um, or adding more regulations have? On overall development. So those are the three areas of regula- of research that we are. Um, proposing to, uh, focus on in this, and I will turn it over the, uh, discussion to you folks now.
Yeah, and those are all, those three areas are all interrelated, like clearly if it's, you know, different ways to quantify, um, noise. They are going to require different methods for measuring, um, things, different levels of technical expertise, like so sometimes. Those things will all sort of be, be connected. I mean, most times they'll be connected.
Everybody's got to hear them. Uh, we'll, we'll start with Colin.
The whole conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, no, I mean, that all sounds reasonable. Um, I guess my main comment is to be. Very intentional also on how we're thinking about enforcement mechanism. I'll say thi- this is essentially based on my current experience with the existing, like, general city noise ordinance violations. You know, but I, I, I might complain about this for building next to me, the old Walgreens, it's vacant now. The landlord has decided to put in loudspeaker systems that go off whenever, including monitored cameras. They go off basically whenever the land. Whoever who's monitoring the cameras sees someone kind of go through property they don't like looks of, and there's a ear splitting, like, uh. Loud noise that just says, get off the property. There's no, there's no sign to say you can't be there, just. Ooh, ears like, and it's, uh, goes off probably about once a day on average, sort of depends how many people walk through the area. Sometimes it goes to middle of the night. It's wa- it's loud enough to wake you up with the windows closed and earplugs in. And looking at this exhausting noise ordinances, it's like. Arguably during the daytime, this is a nuisance ordinance. It's definitely during night because it's a photograph, you know.
Yeah.
Outside ice things. Ordinance to stay, you know, the police or the municipal officer. Uh, the land, uh, my landlord has complained to their landlord and the police once, I complained in twice. Nothing's happened, so. Basically, sorry, I'm not trying to be all emotional, just it's a thing that's driving me crazy at the moment and. At the mo- so basically I'm gangwalking in the middle of the night due to a violation of current noise ordinance. That due to poor enforcement, the current noise ordinance is ineffective. In my lived experience, so I think we just wanna with this, I'm aware we're not trying to change the existing ordinance, but with this similar. Related noise ordinance, we need to think about how it's enforced, cause the enforced new mechanism of the current one. I found renders useless, so.
Yeah, yeah, and thanks for that, just for um for clarity, there is, so the noise ordinance is separate from.
Oh, I'm I'm aware, I'm just saying.
I know you.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I'm aware the current process, I've gone through the official way of dealing with it, like, you know. Yeah, and the official way has failed me and for, I I believe our people may have been multiple about it. Yeah, doesn't, the current process doesn't work for enforcing the existing ones in our experience. And I just wanna make sure that as we're running this one going on, that we are cognizant of how realistically is this actually gonna get enforced? Especially because this is only going on for a few months. This has been going for me for like six months. Maybe eventually if I call the police sometime, maybe they'll do something about it, you know? But in in this case, you complained with the blasting, like. This is an annoying ongoing issue. This is much more intensive, this kind of blasting and like if it takes a few months to sort it out. That's way too long, you know what I mean? So, hey, um yeah, that's that's my comment.
John?
Don had her hand up.
Yeah, well, I had a question for John, you know, cause I think John has a lot to say about this.
Oh, yeah.
There's, I mean. It surprises me sometimes that, you know, people don't realize that there's ledge on a property. Because when you have a piece of property, you're developing it, you know, you're supposed to do test forings. So you find out what are you building on top of, so you know how, you know, what you're gonna encounter when you design the building. And I wonder like, how many projects do that, you know? Probably in a residential, not many, because they seem to always be, oh, surprise, you know, we've gotta, we've gotta do a lot of blasting here. And you know, what I'm suggesting is that can, you know, if you requested test forings. Would the design change to avoid blasting? You know, like for instance, where where I live at Village in Dorset Park. Um they, you know, they they had all the lots set up and everything, but the ones that are that back up to uh Veterans Park. Most of those are had some ledge involved. And so they they actually, there was an architect on the design team, so they changed the design of the houses. And they didn't put in basements on that side, you know, and it's just like common sense things like that, you would think. You would think that a builder would kind of be aware that there's ledge and not try to put basements in those houses. You know, you're still gonna have utilities, yeah, but it's that's relatively minor compared to like blasting out an entire footprint. Um for for a house and everything like that. And so. I'd like to see a little bit kind of addressing before. And when you take something in DRB or, you know, but it's like, okay, we're aware that there is ledge on this property. How much have you done to avoid blasting?
So that is part of the blasting plan process. So the blasting plan has to be provided at the site plan. Um stage, and it is something that the DRB can consider and decide like. No, this is, this is an unreasonable and un- an unacceptable amount of ledge removal that you'd have to do because it would take you. You know, two years of blasting sixteen time today and and whatever, like I'm being facetious, but um. That is part, that is already in the regulations, that the DRB has the ability to say like, nope, you're, you know. The way that you've designed this and the what you're asking for isn't isn't balancing these community concerns. Um with the the amount of blasting that would be required.
And how does that like, how does that work in reality?
So that, this is brand new, the blasting plan is brand.
We hadn't.
There wasn't, this doesn't, this didn't exist. Um and this is, that is why this does exist now is in response to. Um the concern that people are not looking at blasting beforehand, they're kind of designing their project and then going, oh no, I have to blast some things. Um so having them to, forcing them to do the homework, and that's part of why it says um either known or reasonably foreseeable. Um the DRB has the ability to say, if someone comes in and says, I'm not gonna have to do any chipping or blasting. The DRB can has the ability to say, um that doesn't make any sense. Or they can order, or they can order independent technical review.
Right, or have you done it?
Regulation says something about no, no basements.
No, it doesn't say that.
No, you can't say no basements.
You can't say no basements.
Know like.
It is a balancing.
What's under the site that you're building on?
Where is it in?
It's in sixteen, article sixteen.
Yeah.
Where this is a commission discussion.
We'll we'll get to you in a minute, sir. We're gonna finish the conversation up here. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Said, she said something, but she can't back it up.
John, go ahead.
Okay, uh. Yes, I have a number of things to to say. Uh first of all, de minimis, um. Quick recap, cause I'm not sure if you were here at the meeting, I live near Long Drive. So the instigating event for this whole thing was all the the chipping. First preface that by saying they did the the chipping, you know, the drilling and the the extraction. I hate to say jackhammering because the device they're using looks nothing like a jackhammer. You know, you think of a guy in a hard hat with a jackhammer. Now this is an excavator with a three inch bit that's about two feet long. Uh eight hours a day, eighty-five decibels at my kitchen window. And I was not the nearest lot to the work. So this was, this was life altering to hundreds of households. This is a community health, safety, welfare issue. I am far less concerned about the impact this could have on developers. So to say de minimis forty hours, they can do what I just described for forty hours with no restrictions. If they get a new fancy piece of equipment that'll do the the removal faster and only be a hundred decibels louder, there's nothing to stop that. They could come up with the latest and greatest hydraulic uh jackhammer. It's only a hundred decibels louder and our regulation says we can't stop you. Because you're outside the nuisance ordinance, because this specifically addresses bedrock. And this says you can do it for forty hours, no questions asked. So that's a huge loophole. If you wanna restrict this to a handheld jackhammer, I'm I'm good with that. Nobody's gonna hear that. So I I I really object to the idea that that's de minimis in any way. Um the bedrock removal plan. I I appreciate where it's going and I understand that, but I think in our last agenda item, you you summed it up perfectly. The DRB can't arbitrarily make decisions from one item to another without any sort of guidelines to back it up.
Yep.
Because as arbitrary and capricious, it's not gonna hold up in court. And the regulation as written gives the DRB no guidelines whatsoever. There's nothing in there. It's smoke. Yeah, they have to say how much they have to remove. Okay, how long do they think it'll take? Yeah, but there's no, there's nothing firm on that. How loud do we think it'll be? Oh, well, we don't really know. Are we gonna do any mitigation? Well, they certainly didn't on Long Drive. They got a lot of scrutiny from the city. Never once did they suggest any sort of noise mitigation. It was simply, eh, we'll we'll get it done sooner or later. They can put a plan together that's just, yeah, this is what we're gonna do. And the DRB maybe sends it out for technical review and somebody reviews it and says, yes, that's a plan. And then the DRB says, oh, it's unreasonable, we're not gonna allow it. How does that hold up in court? What basis did they use? What's in the regulation that allows them to say it was too long, it was too much, it was too loud? It did anything that violated the regulation. So they really can't say no. The way that the regulation is written. We need to give them specific parameters that they can, and I was on the DRB. You need to give them specific parameters that they can say, no, the guideline says this long, the guideline says this loud. I'd be perfectly happy saying something like, and and I agree, it's not the clearest thing, but other places have done it. We can set numerical guidelines. And you're looking at the receiving parcels. So maybe we say, okay, if your neighbors all say they don't care. Then you can move your line to the next adjoining parcel. So if you're in the middle of nowhere. And you're jackhammering and the next adjoining parcel is a mile away, make as much noise as you want, cause nobody's gonna hear it. When you're doing it, when you're right next to, you know. Hate to say it, but I almost love to see something like this happen right next to City Hall. Just so you can have your entire day disrupted by listening to this for eight hours a day, which is what we're saying. Eight hours a day, five days a week, ninety-five decibels at your office. We need some hard limits in here or just tell them that they can't. And I can guarantee you that the. Currently, no one's looking at, we don't need basements. Most of the jackhammering done in the last couple of years was for basements.
I suspected that.
The first round, it took four months, four months, eight hours a day. That was for the road. For putting the road in.
Utilities.
Well, then, the way they cut the road in, yeah. Um but the rest of it for basements and stuff, we had no ability to tell them, don't put a basement in. You have no God-given right to a basement. If your law doesn't permit it, build on slab, it's done, build on stilts, it's done on crawl, it's done all the time. So I I really think that directionally. The existing ordinance, there there are some good things there, but without giving the DRB something to sink their teeth into. We're saying, do whatever you want.
I I think that was, I know we, you and I had a disagreement on this, but I think we talked about that. I mean, that was the point of us taking this up again was to put some more teeth to it.
Yeah.
I I think that's that's what we're looking to do, and that's great feedback that you gave us there. Um I know you said, you know, I've had a conversation with you about the. The difficulty of getting a standard. In terms of a numeric standard.
Which is why we're doing full project charge.
Yeah, and they, and so, you know, without. We don't, we wanna avoid going down the uh like going going, getting too deep into hypothetical discussions at night because. You know, what we'd like to do uh is to is to verify that that what we're looking, we're proposing to look into. Is going to be satisfying to folks who have questions like yours, John, and who uh and that. That you feel satisfied that what we're proposing to look into is going to yield enough information to start making decisions about. Whether the the sta- some of the standards you're proposing or ideas you're proposing might be merited. So but just to, you know, to give an example, like to answer your question, Duncan, yes, so. Part of the reason why we haven't come up with a standard uh quite yet about a using a numerical uh just a number. Is for instance, if you. Set a limit of, you know, let's say seventy-five decibels for any kind of bedrock removal noise that eliminates blasting. Blasting could be uh useful as a way to avoid having to do chipping. So that you sudden, so setting that could potentially turn, and this is just a hypothetical, this could turn certain regular projects that could be accomplished with. Two or three days of blasting where you're having one or two blasts per day that are louder than uh than uh most construction noises. Into a project that goes on for weeks with hydraulic chipping or something like that. So in an attempt to avoid creating a scenario, creating more scenarios where we inadvertently. Push people into doing things that are equally or more disruptive, we'd like to take the time to do to look at all the available options. Present them to you folks for discussion and uh give this the amount of research that it deserves. Cause it's clearly an issue that people have strong opinions about and has a lot of tra- and in in involves a lot of important trade-offs. So.
I I'm just um curious in terms of. Um how, what kind of parameters you could give the DRB? So that they could say, um looking at your blasting plan, is that what we call a blasting plan?
Yeah.
Um it appears like. It's gonna require too much blasting to build a basement. Um or put the road where you want it. And so I don't know how you um. Get that kind of definitive information out of a blasting plan that a DRB person could say. Hell no, you know, this whole road, nobody gets a basement, cause there's so much bedrock. And it will take, it'll be too, too much blasting, too much chipping, too much time. De minimis or not, and I agree with you, I can't imagine eight hours, forty hours in a week. That is what I would call de minimis, but um I know that's a a legal term, but that. Sure sounds like a lot of noise before neighbors.
Just to keep in mind, when we're talking about the de minimis exception, we're talking about the one time forty hours, a total of forty hours, not forty hours per week, every week. That's forty hours for the entire project.
At any noise level.
I mean, yeah, currently, there's no numerical limit for for that.
Well.
Exactly.
And that's a, that's a number that was discussed at the planning commission in, whatever that was, July, August, it was. Is it, is the number eight hours, is the number forty hours, is the number?
It was the eleventh hour decision that we were.
Yeah, yeah, that was, it was.
I would argue that the num- without a noise level attached to it, the zero hours. We shouldn't be giving carte blanche to, can you imagine doing this next to a school? Could you imagine if they were doing this work next to one of the elementary schools? No, we never let that happen. But we can let it happen in the middle of two fairly densely populated neighborhoods. And we did it for four years, on and off, for a total of probably six or eight months.
Yeah, so we we hear you, John, and we understand the concerns and what you've been dealing with, and we're trying to frame out the. In the what we're working on and what we're looking at and what we're bringing into both um. Both sort of, I would call more passive research, you know, looking up standards and all of that, but also reaching out to um. A um environmental health people and um main drilling and blasting and, you know, industry people and worker safety people. And doing a lot of work um to see what makes the most sense for South Burlington um in this, in this instance. Because Nick is right, like you may have a situation where um. A rock or a piece of rock, you know, could be blasted away and made room for putting in a road that has to go in a certain direction or whatever it is. You know, details aside, it takes four blasts, but the blasts are a hundred and fifty decibels. Or whatever it is, as opposed to three weeks of seventy-five decibels. So if you put a number and said seventy-five decibels, that you might be trading that off for duration versus a higher number. For very short periods of time. So there's all these moving pieces and like how it's, Nick alluded to it, how it's measured, where it's measured, who's doing the measuring. All of these things are part of this. Um so the idea today is just to be. Putting everybody back on, you know, putting this back in your minds and setting up the project charge to, again, like the last project. Sort of setting out like this is what we're working on and this is what we're going to be doing and moving this forward. We're not defending what is in the LDRs now as being good enough. We are, we are saying that this is a topic that has been given to us by the planning commission and by the city council as needing further study. Um and so we are planning to do that, we're doing that study and we're doing it in an intentional way. In a thoughtful way and an intelligent way while taking into account all of the different factors that are important. And that the both this commission and the city council have passed forward as being important to be balanced, which were the four. Goals that Nick listed at the beginning. So this is the sort of frame of this meeting is. Is this, this is the shape of the project and we're gonna move forward and have all of these discussions? And where are we going to go with these discussions? But we just need more time on the staff end. To have sufficient information from all directions to be able to do this in a in a thoughtful um and intentional way.
The feedback I'm presenting is that the impression that I've gotten from staff. On this issue is that this is a construction issue. And I consider this a community health, safety and welfare issue.
Understood.
So I think we need to make sure that we're protecting the residents before we're protecting the ability to develop. And I, it just seems to me that most of the focus of this has been the opposite.
I, I.
Still early in the stages, you know, we still.
Yeah, I think, I think what I. I'm a little disheartened to hear you say that because I've been, I have been trying to frame it as being multifaceted. And that's the way that the regulations are written, as having sort of different facets to it. Um we do have housing goals, we do have development goals, we do have things that need to be happening in. In the city to be meeting our economic goals, to be doing all of these things that we need to be doing. Um and those things need to be balanced but against the needs and the the health of the people who are already living here. So there is a balance between the two things. It is up to the commission to be determining where that balance tips. Um you know, is it zero decibels, is it a hundred and fifty decibels if it's only blasting four times? Or you know, where are those things? Who does the enforcement? How is it all? Where does the money fall? All of these things. Or, you know, where are those things? Who does the enforcement? How is it all? Where does the money fall? All of these things are part of this big universe. So we're looking for, um, confirmation from the planning commission that we have defined the universe. And that we can move forward and Nick in particular can move forward in reaching out to the professionals in this area. Because we'll be the first to admit that we are not the professionals in this area. Nobody in this room is the professionals in this area, um, on the technical side of any of this. Um, so having the opportunity to look into it and provide as much information honestly as we can gather. And present that all to you, and then it is up to the, the commission and then the council to do with that what, um, you'd like.
Okay, I just have one additional question. In terms of the, the. And, and I appreciate how difficult this is, and I wasn't trying to be obnoxious. I just think those param- those are parameters. That I have no idea what they could be.
Yeah.
And it seems to me they're important.
They are, they are very important, and the way, there's a lot of technical stuff and, and Nick has waded into this much farther than I have. There's a lot of technical, you know, specs and, and all these different things that people do in different scenarios and in different settings and in different. Sure. You know, whatever's going on, there's different ways to do it. Um. So there's a lot going on and I, what I was, what just you just reminded me is, um, from a legal perspective, the. The, when I say that they need to have, there need, when you said, John, there needs to be standards, those standards do not necessarily need to be numeric. It doesn't need to be like something, again, I'm being a little bit silly about this, but, you know. One dollar of cost versus one decibel of noise. Like there doesn't have to be a, or a, you know, flat ceiling of seventy-five decibels. You don't need to have a number.
Uh huh.
It doesn't have to be quantifiable to be a defensible standard. So a balancing, like setting out standards that the DRB should use to. These are the factors you should consider in your balancing decision of your, of this blasting plan, like. Are there feasible alternatives for a different location? Are there feasible alternatives for not having basements? Are there, um, opportunities to, um, mitigate by using sound walls or using a different mechanism or using something else? All of those things can be written into the standards as, as things that the DRB needs to consider. It doesn't necessi- it can be. But doesn't necessarily have to be a, you know, never exceed a hundred decibels or never exceed two days. And it, well, I have to have the hard numbers as, as boundaries, um, for it to be legally defensible standards.
Well, I wasn't, uh, anticipating that we needed, um, so, uh, an actual boundary. But for the cost. Um, consideration, I'm just curious, who makes that case? Is it the developer?
The applicant.
The applicant, so they.
As the.
Would come to the DRB.
As current, as the LDRs currently stand, this is not, you know, all of this can be tweaked and changed going forward. But as a currently, the, what is currently in there, in there is that the, it's part of your application. So it's like anything else, they have to make, they have to say. We meet the standards because we are doing this.
But they can't say it's too expensive, I can't afford to do this development. So either, you know, you let me do the blasting where I want. Um, or I, I walk away. I'm just curious. I mean, I think the cost piece is, I don't know how anyone on the DRB would say. Um, yeah, well, that's too bad that it costs too much if you wanna do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how you make that case. I, I get it that it's a balancing thing and the developer needs to make the case.
I, I, I think where we're at is obviously we've got some very strong opinions on this. Um, what, what these guys are asking is. If they wanna do some research, come back with things. Obviously, we are going to discuss this again in detail. Um, from a number of different standpoints.
Yeah.
Um, I think at this point, if you look at the project charge, is that adequate? That, that, that's what, you know, is, is there anything in there that. You know, you don't agree with or don't want in or something you wanna add in? Go ahead, Donna. Actually, I'm such a Colin, you had your hand up.
Oh, I mean, I was basically, I mean, I was basically gonna say that, yeah, I, I think, uh, yeah, I seconded that. I think I'd like to, you know. Get more discussion once we have something, like an actual draft list like in front of us, but, uh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I for one am. The way it is framed in this. Uh, yeah, the, the way, the way it's been framed, sorry, in the charge order, I'm, I'm happy with and I. Yeah, I, I'm happy with how it's currently framed and we'll see what ends up happening. We can always modify it to death later if we need to.
And I would like to, to modify the project description, uh, to include some of those precursor issues. You know, investigation on, um, you know, to establish the, the need. Uh, for bedrock removal. Um, you know, before, you know, make sure that that's established. Uh, in the plan, because it's not really referenced. It's not referenced in this project charge. And I'd like it to be referenced, you know, established the actual, you know. And, and I don't mean just say, oh, well, you know, there's, there, we know that there's some bedrock there and, and we wanna build basements. And so we know that there's gonna be X amount of, you know, there's likely to be substantial amount of, of bedrock removal. And I, I think that they should, you know, as somebody pointed out. Um, there needs to be real guidance, you know, this, this project, uh, needs to include real guidance for the DRB. On how do you address specific projects with, um, bedrock removal requirements?
Mm-hmm.
I'd, I'd say if you added that to it, it would, it would be much more, much better.
Okay, so just to be clear, the, you're suggesting or you're requesting that we add, um. As part of, as part of, add to the project charge, one of the goals to is, um, I'm just gonna.
I think it's an area of, of.
Out of area of research about establishing the need for bedrock removal as part of a bedrock removal plan. As one of the things that we are going to research.
I think it is part of, um, number one, the other alter- other communities and industry best practices, like.
Yeah.
Can we find other communities that have stated in a, in a way, whichever, however they state it. Um, that a developer or a builder must demonstrate, you know, no feasible alternative. Or like just, that's part of the research into other regulations is, are there other municipalities that require. Um, that demonstration as part of their, um.
It's not one, you know, it's not a reasonable thing.
Yep.
I, you know, to me, it's reasonable because builders in fact, on their own, do this.
Yeah.
You know, same ones do it, you know, ones and particularly ones that have an architect on staff. And they're like, yeah, we can make these few modifications and we can build this loud basement. You know, if somebody is building from stop plans only, yeah, they may be reluctant to do that, but, you know, it's a lot cheaper to redesign something. Than it is to blast a hole in the ground. It's a lot less noisy too.
Um, okay.
Okay.
Um.
So approve it kind of with Donna's change?
Does that?
Yeah, so I just said, include in the project charge, um, research into other municipalities, regulations regarding designing around. Known or foreseeable bedrock.
Okay, um, and any other comment on it? No, all right, member of the public there, sir?
Yeah. So.
State your name, please.
My name is Kings Leece. My name is. So. South Burlington has borne had a noise ordinance. And I'm just gonna read one paragraph from that noise ordinance. It says it shall be unlawful for any person to make or cause to be made any loud or unreasonable noise. Noise shall be deemed unreasonable when it disturbs, injures or endangers. The public health of a person. Or when it endangers the health, safety or welfare of the community. Any noise, any such noise shall be considered to be a noise disturbance in a public. Now, the regulations are supposed to implement the, the laws. And the law in this case is ordinance. This regulation doesn't mention anything about public health, safety and welfare. It's completely omitted. It's not anywhere in the four objectives of the claim. The city staff heard input. At their last meeting and at the city council meeting, when it was a public hearing, but they ignored it. The city staff ignores this ordinance, which is the.
I'm sorry, sir, but I, I'm going to object to you of characterizing it as city staff. These are decisions that are made by the planning commission and city council. Who are appointed and elected officials. It is my job to do what the planning commission and city council asks me to do. So I am objecting to your considerate, your characterization of any of this as being staff-driven because it isn't. You may continue, but I am not happy with how you're characterizing my work.
You can be on, be with us. Unlike the ordinance, the city staff does not have public health, safety and welfare as an objective. The city staff did not even mention public health, safety and welfare in any of its presentation. Or any of its written dis- presentation. Public health, safety and welfare should be the main thing that we're talking about here, as John pointed out. It's, it's the problem with this regulation that's in place right now. Is that it doesn't protect the public's health, safety and welfare. It opens the door, why? To massive amounts of noise without any limit. And it, and it's just unacceptable. The city staff admits that it's, doesn't have the knowledge, that it needs to do research. So why did it present a, a, a regulation where it itself says it didn't have. The basis of putting that regulation forth. The city staff points to the city twenty-twenty-four city plan. But goal thirty-seven, which it points to in that city plan, requires consideration of public health. And action fifty-four in the city plan specifically requires noise pollution reduction. So they didn't even follow the city plan. There's nothing in the city plan that they pointed to that allows. Or even mentions bedrock removal. And I'd just like to make one point about bedrock removal that they have omitted from their presentation. We know jackhammering, we heard it's eighty-five decibel. We've heard that blasting can be as high as a hundred and fifty decibels. But along with blasting, you have to have a place to put the explosive. And that place is obtained by drilling in the bedrock. And you need something like each hole in the bedrock takes eight minutes. And you need thirty holes, you're talking about four hours, just to do the thirty holes into the bedrock. And the tool to drill those holes is a hundred and twenty-four decibel. Drilling the holes for the bed, for each blast is four hours. With a tool that's emitting at a hundred and twenty-four decibels, called a top hammer drill. So blasting is no way to reduce the noise, the continual all-day-long noise level. If you're gonna have two blasts a day, you're talking about eight hours of this drilling. And why was that omitted from the city staff report? I'd like to know. By ignoring the ordinance, by omitting public health, safety and welfare from its consideration, by failing to conduct research. By ignoring.
Well, hold on, hold on, what, what, you are making accusations. We're not, we're not here to hear accusation. You wanna give us feedback on this plan? Is that what you're looking to do?
Tell me the facts about what we're experiencing as members of the public. We've got a problem here.
We understand, we understand that, and that's what we're trying to work on.
Yeah.
That's what we are, that, that's what we just did this project charge for. That's what we're trying to work on.
Okay, so here's, here's where I'm getting to, is my next phrase. The work of the state environmental. The work, the state of Vermont Environmental Board. Was also ignored, and they've had that in their possession and they know about it because the state environmental board did its research. Conduct, had, um, um. Did the, the research that they're talking about, but they're experts at it. And they came up with a regulation that was implemented in, been implemented, implemented in Vermont for twenty years. And the city staff. Didn't even mention this. So I think they knowingly and deliberately put forth an agenda. That harms public health, safety and welfare, and it's now in place as the regulation. And this is sickening.
And, and the point is, sir, we're gonna go back and work on this.
Demonstrated that it just doesn't know what it's doing and can't be presented. Something else is needed.
You know what? Hold on a sec, here. You, you, you are leveling accusations against the staff that are your opinion, okay? If you wanna give us input as to what you would like to see is put into the plan, that's what we'd like to hear from you. No accusations.
So fortunately, the state of Vermont Environmental Board did the work. I sent. A, uh, proposal based on the work of the state of Vermont Environmental Board to each of you. Earlier today. And the board set standards for adverse impact to humans under Act two fifty. And issued decisions regarding bedrock removal near areas of public. You, uh, significant.
Mm-hmm.
Frequent public use. Its standards were adopted by the environmental court and by the Vermont Supreme Court. And nothing short of those reasonable state standards should be adopted by South Burlington. But the Supreme Court lets you make it even stronger and more protective. Public health, safety and welfare on the local level. The state environmental board standard is included. And is the basis of the citizen proposed amendment that I shared with you earlier. It establishes a limit on noise immediately outside homes and other locations of frequent. Human use like daycare centers, schools, parks and recreation parks. This proposal sets the noise limit at sensitive locations of human use. While not restricting noise at all, even if it far exceeds that limit that are away from. Sensitive locations. And this idea of location was already brought up by one of the members, and I appreciate that. It is the job of the planning commission to abide by and set the regulation consistent with the ordinance. Adopted by the city council and not to ignore that ordinance, which protects. Public health, safety and welfare as its top priority, the noise regulation. To do its job properly to protect public health, safety and welfare, this planning commit, com- commission. Should reject the proposal put forward by the staff and adopt the state of Vermont Environmental Board standard. Which is embodied in the citizen proposed standard bedrock removal. It should not contradict the noise ordinance and allow this regulation to succeed. For an indefinite amount of time, while the city staff is learning. Is learning and researching when we already have an adequate standard put forward by the state environmental board. Thank you.
All right, we appreciate your feedback. Okay, um. Now, we need to vote on the project charge. Commissioner is okay with the project charge as listed with the change that Donna made?
Uh, yeah, I am.
Yeah.
What, this, there's a way we have to use for making a motion on it?
Yeah, yeah, we need to make a motion.
Move to approve amended project charge, bedrock removal, noise mitigation research continued September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
All seconds.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that Colin or Helen? Who's that?
Well, you can give it to Colin. I open my mouth too much.
We do, last thing, we have some minutes to approve. Um.
I would move approval of the minutes as presented.
Eight twenty-six, twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, other business? I don't think we have any other business.
Do not. So we, our next meeting is on a Tuesday, right?
Is on a Tuesday and have five Tuesdays in September, so it actually is October fourteenth.
Fourteen?
Right, because September thirtieth is a Tuesday, so we have an extra day, week off.
Okay.
In between. Yes, October fourteenth and October twenty-eighth are the meetings in October. Does anyone know that they are not? Duncan.
I'm not gonna be here on the fourteenth.
I will, I do not think I will be here on the twenty-eighth.
I will be on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so I have missing on the fourteenth Helen, on the twenty-eighth Duncan. Is that all we know from the group that is here? All right, thank you very much.
All right, we are adjourned.
Surgery?
You what?
It's not surgery.